Prohibition or or moratorium for for a temporary period of time. That that would have to go to the voters. You could also technically pass an ordinance that permits those activities as well, and that ordinance would also go to the voters as well. And then the third option is kind of the the take no action option. And this measure one oh nine is is distinct from what we dealt with in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen with with marijuana and that the the presumption is that at the local level, there is an opt in to allowing the use versus versus an opt out. So the default would be that they would be permitted in the city.
Well, I I guess I'll just go right into what I said at the last council meeting is. I mean, my my preference is that we just ban this completely, let it go to the voters, let them decide. I just think that this is opening up a box that we don't want to deal with. This is part of of the homeless situation is the mental illness that drugs cause, and this leads to other drugs. Because I saw it in the seventies. And you know, it's just, it's just not a good thing. We don't need to have this in our town. That would be my my preference on it.
Can I just ask a question of staff? It says here that if we were, if we're going to take no action, right, then that would mean we're going to have to develop regulations. How onerous would that project be? Or would this have to come from else from OHA or something?
I do believe it would be somewhat onerous. And this is virgin territory in effect. And it would involve a lot of Doug's research time and a lot of other staff time.
So I could see both sides on this one. For questions, how much of how much of this is realistically, do we think is going to happen within city limits? I know that like growing. How much? Do we anticipate that this would be done in outside of an agricultural grow space? Or are we thinking? Like, how how much is this really going to affect? It feels to me like this would be much more of like a county led initiative than a city led initiative. I guess that's my first question.
I think that in terms of zoning for manufacturing, I would have to defer to Doug on if he has any sense of what what that might look like.
Yeah, like medical growth space. I don't even know what the zoning.
I mean, there's a there would, I assume there would be some kind of chemical processing aspect to it rather than regular agriculture, but I I'm really no expert on this one. Doug, do you have any idea about that?
If there was a a growing and or manufacturing process, you would likely want to have that out in an industrial area. Similar type uses. In your marijuana regulations, the grow operations on that commercial industrial scale are all out in our manufacturing M one, M two, and three areas. So kind of to the south of town and then some areas up along the railroad tracks. It depends. You know what type of business operation you want to have? For a climate controlled environment, sort of like, you know, a hothouse for growing tomatoes operation. I think it's new enough. At least the material I've seen is kind of unknown. How's the market going to respond to it?
Okay, follow on, I guess. So I respect what Council McBride is saying, and I think that from the perspective of recreational use, but from the perspective of medical use, I don't know how big this market really is, right? So how, what is the population that's truly utilizing this for a medical? I did call some call a couple of friends and it's not under, to my understanding, a large, a huge population that's tapping into this for medical use. So I guess logistically, in the size of the city of Newburgh with the buildable land or usable land that we would have for industrial space, it is very small and limited. I guess just philosophically, I wouldn't say that having the ability to grow or manufacture is going to cause individuals within our city limits to use psilocybin. Right? I mean, I I think that marijuana and psilocybin are actually very different uses. And I guess philosophically, that's where I'd go. That being said, this is not a hill I'm going to die on, Mike. So I don't think that this is something that we need to be split on. I would like to see this as something we could get to a consensus as a group. Because I don't see the, I don't see psilocybin as the drug of choice for people that are chronically homeless or struggling with mental health.
Did I also read that distribution centers would be encompassed in this as well?
There is the potential for both manufacturing and distribution within rules that we don't yet know.
Just just one thing, and so apparently, and again, this is the old quick Google search, but therapy on depression and anxiety are the main uses for for this apparently. And PTSD and apparently helping smokers quit too. So so, yeah, I too would push back a little bit on the notion that in many ways, this could be treatment for people that are experiencing houselessness. So the other thing is, it says here that apparently the market for psychedelic industries and this type of thing is six point eight five billion by twenty twenty seven. So it's it's big money. So anyway, but I too, I just don't know enough about it. Honestly, to to really vendor venture an opinion. What about our online participants? Denise or Peggy?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mike. I don't completely understand this, but if the city of Newburgh says we we would ban the manufacturer and services of it, there probably are other places in the county where they could get it, people who need it for PTSD or whatever. But I, from what I understand, there are a lot of people who use it who aren't using it for medical reasons. So I just would, I just think we should bear away from it.
Denise?
My feelings of it as a medical use are, of course, prescribed medical uses are fine. But I do think there's no harm in sending it to the voters since that's really what we're being asked to do. Make it their decision to the future of Newburgh. And if this is what they want, the future of Newburgh to be a part of or not, I mean, we don't, we don't know. So that that's where I would go with it. I mean, we didn't ask him on marijuana. We didn't ask, well, we asked the state, right? But the state is not Newburgh. We didn't ask them if they wanted to grow grapes and have wine either, but but I think when we have the opportunity to ask, we should ask, and I guess that's, you know, my feelings on its medical use. If if it's working for people, that's great, but I think it's up to the voters to decide.
And would you prefer then a complete ban or a two year ban?
I would, knowing Newburgh voters, I would say a complete. And I don't have a lot of trucks for the agency that's going to be managing it either. So there's, there's also that. They've had some struggles.
Yeah, and I, you know, I agree, I agree philosophically on returning, on taking things to voters. When we start getting into what business we're going to allow and disallow, that gets a little bit sticky for me. But I think in this case, we've got something that's that's so new that I that I could see it, but the other, the other side of it is, is, you know, we've, again, as I say all the time, we've got two hundred acres that we're trying to get businesses and biotech or something along those lines would probably be fairly attractive. So anyway, but I can go with the majority on this as well. All right. Any other discussion on this subject? All right, I think we probably know how we're going to vote. Do you need anything else, James?
I don't need anything else as far as how how the council would like to proceed. I guess just a a couple of of comments on what will be in front of you as part of the agenda for the regular meeting. First, the the moratorium option for a two year moratorium. That two years in particular is there isn't exact magic in that two years. The template that was developed by the League of Oregon Cities had it had a two year moratorium, and so most cities are kind of following that approach that generally builds in enough time to get to the final rules to look at the time. You know, implementing time, place, and manner restrictions and whatnot, but but there's nothing from a statutory perspective that requires two years in particular. It could be longer or shorter. The the second piece is that whether a question that is circulating in, I'll say, city attorney circles is if if the governing body were to pass a moratorium and then allow that moratorium to expire, could you then come back and pass a ban and take that to the next general election? My position is yes, I think you can. That is an open question, though, right now that's being that's being evaluated on many, on many levels. So again, as as city manager, where they said, we're in uncharted territory, if you will, so it's a bit complex, but that's another item or kind of path to consider.
So if you were, if we were to vote to tonight to send to the to the voters to ban, if they were to pass and it was banned, would we be able to go back? And say the council in four years is like, oh, you know, we figured out that this is a very select population. It's being used, like, could they bring it back through another row?
And and like rescind the ordinance that was passed? Technically, that's an interesting, yeah, that's an interesting fact pattern, but you could, you know, in the future, come back and rescind that ordinance.
Other questions, folks?
I do.
Sorry, go ahead. Peggy, yes, please.
I had a similar question. Except the opposite, if the if we send it to the voters and they don't pass it so that there is no ban, then what happens? What would be the next step? Then could we send it two years later again? Or do a two year ban or does it just make it permissible to have manufacture and service of it in Newburgh? If the voters don't vote to ban it?
I want to make sure I'm a counselor, I want to make sure I'm understanding the the fact pattern. So a permanent ban is passed by council. It's referred to the voters. The voters vote down the permanent ban.
Correct.
Therefore, making it, you know, not effective.
Then where do we stand?
I'm sorry.
Then where do we stand? Where does that leave it?
So if it's voted down, then and and not effective, then those those uses or those activities are permitted within the city limits, and OHA will have the ability to to review and and approve, you know, licensing applications and and other applications in connection with those uses.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I think they'll pass it, but.
One thing that I am kind of willing to say on the record is I, with the way measure one ten has gone, I struggle with this with OHA being the regulating body of this, this body of work. So I do think that that is something to consider and something for us to be mindful of is just with the way measure one ten has gone and the lack of distribution of dollars to health organizations in Oregon in the last two years and sitting on one point five billion dollars. I struggle with that. So that's my personal thought.
I guess the only thing that I'll say too is I don't, you know, I don't, I I worry that that this gets caught up in, you know, again, Mike said the magic mushrooms of the seventies and all, but if this is actually a breakthrough for people that are struggling with mental health issues. And I I don't want the mental health component of this to be downplayed. That, you know, that many people suffer, and and if there's some kind of treatment that will be beneficial, I don't want that to be downplayed in this discussion. All right, anything else, folks? Alrighty, yes, sir, Will.
Doug, thank you for your expert opinion there. Thank you.
Alrighty. We good for that for the moment? Okay, we'll be back on that one here in a little bit. Do you want to do your city managers' report as we've got a few ticks here?
I certainly will. And to keep me out of trouble, Zyra has given me a clicker. Which apparently does not need line of sight to see her laptop to work. I I have not had training. We're so we're just going to wing it here. How hard can it be, right? Okay. So statistics. Delicious crunchy fresh statistics. Planning decisions. We had thirteen combined planning decisions of all sorts. And budget building permits for units six. And I was asked to break out ADUs alone, and for this period, there were no such constructions. Crikey, this thing is working. Building permits of other types, one hundred and six. Building inspections, eight hundred and twelve. In community engagement, we had twenty two questions or referrals through our website. And we had seven thousand nine hundred and thirty six social media engagements or questions through those channels. Community engagement, more statistics, social media followers, three thousand seven hundred twenty five Facebook, four oh five Twitter, and two hundred and forty five LinkedIn. Finance processed one point six three million dollars of payments through accounts payable. And remember, folks, if you're following this at home, it's all manual. And zero point eight five million of payroll in HR activity, we had four advertised recruitments, one hire, two separations, and we had one claim. And by the way, claims are not always a bad thing. IT resolved two hundred and fifty five service service tickets detailing specific problems and had to respond to seven after hours on call events to keep the servers running. Thank you, Ian. And in library activity, the door count was six thousand seven hundred and twenty four visitors and circulation was twenty three thousand and ninety nine. And I might point out that the normal COVID numbers were actually just shy of thirty thousand circulation events. So we still have a ways to go to recover from that pandemic impact. Dispatch nine one one calls, we dealt with seven hundred and eighty one. And on the non emergency front, three thousand five hundred and nine non emergency dispatch calls. Other public safety statistics, we had two thousand and thirty four calls for service, five hundred and fifteen traffic stops, and four hundred and twenty two citations and warnings of all sorts. And sadly, we had ten DUII events. Public Works dealt with one thousand seven hundred and forty three work orders completed in the month and produced fifty three point eight million gallons of fresh water and dealt with one hundred and twenty five point five zero eight million gallons of wasted water. And you may notice that the amount of water produced was identical to last month's number, which I did query, and it was just a coincidence. So that's it for me, statistics. As more months go by, the data keeps coming in, and we will very soon have an annual picture to develop some median forecasting. Any questions?
So what kind of a claim is a good claim?
So sometimes. So, yeah, actually, it wouldn't be any of the claims that you deal with, Mike. So a claim, for example, for family medical leave, that would count as something HR needs to deal with as a claim. No, it's not like the water controller circuit, Mike. You'll never stump me again with that one. So, yeah, so we have some things that are just good for families to do. They're not issues like an accident or something.
I'm going to out myself. I always, every time we talk about how many building inspections, that number seems so high. Can you just tell us what like what goes into a building inspection and how are you doing cement?
So I I will describe it vaguely, although Doug could no doubt describe it in tremendous detail. It would be going onsite, for example, to make sure that a cement pore was level and proper to make sure that trustees were properly constructed, to make sure that, for example, somebody had pulled the permits to hang sheetrock in a local business that's trying to open. Or anything like that. Those are the onsite inspections to make sure that our regulations are met. And more importantly, that our buildings are safe and habitable.
How many people are doing those?
There is.
I'm joking. I'm joking.
I think I think when we were at our very low staff point, maybe Doug was doing some of those too.
If you watch The Big Bang Theory and Sheldon splits into two. No, we typically, we have two. So we have one full time person. Our building official does all of the structural mechanical inspections and some of the residential plumbing. And then we have a plumbing inspector who does all of the plumbing stuff. And then we have our plans examiner, who also backfills to do inspections based upon the volume and so forth that we have.
And and my understanding that, as Doug has explained it to me, is that the second bloke does more or less of that type of work, depending on whether we have a crazy volume.
That's like thirty three a day.
It's kind of bonkers, yes.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm just trying to figure out how you map out your driving so you can hit that money, please.
Well, we have a permit software system. Okay. And so, no, the the system is supposed to assist us in mapping it out to go on routes to do all the inspections. And some inspections, you can go in and, you know, it's five minutes. And there are other types of inspections that can last two or three or four hours. It depends upon what's being called in. If you're doing a very technical commercial building with multiple floors and so forth, it takes a lot more work. But to go in and do a mechanical inspection inspection for a furnace, they're going to do that, you know, our plumbing inspector can go out because they're doing the rough plumbing. And so we basically looking at the kitchen and the bathrooms and so forth, but then you got to come back and do the finished plumbing, and it's got to be inspected. So just a wide variety of things.
And and it's also, it's it's not just Newburgh, right? We do, we do services for others.
So the numbers that we provide you are for Newburgh.
Newburgh only.
So we do additional inspections for Dundee, Dayton, and Lafayette.
Right.
So the most inspections that we've done historically was in this particular fiscal year, right after the February holiday where we did one hundred and two inspections in one day.
What? I want to come on a day like that.
And that was for all the jurisdictions.
And that was a jaw dropping monthly number. You remember that month when you were like?
No, they they drive a white truck with the city logo on it. It does have emergency lights, but not red and blue. My colleague at the end doesn't allow us to do that. No, so they're they're busy, you know, we're usually in the office in the morning, you know, about seven, getting ready, and then they're out by ten o'clock doing inspections and depending on the volume, they could be done by five, they might be done by seven. It just depends.
And we we well know those contractors don't like to be delayed on their permits. We 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 know that, so yeah. All right, anything else on the city managers' report? Alrighty, we, again, we've still got some time. So I have another another item of business is actually from the business session, but I think I've been alerted that we can do this now. So this is a these are, these are the, you know, the proclamations that are that are fun. So here's a, here's a fun one. This is a proclamation recognizing the hundredth birthday of Clarence Jim Lever. Whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences this individual brings to all. And whereas the city of Newburgh recognizes with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens to our community. And whereas Clarence Jim Lever, now a resident of Friendsview Retirement Community, was born on July twenty ninth nineteen twenty two and was raised in McMinnville, Oregon, on a farm off Baker Creek Road. And whereas Mr. Lever is a World War Two veteran, thank you for your service, who later attended Linfield College, now University, and Cal Poly Tech, California Polytechnic State University in San Luis Obispo. And whereas Mr. Lever spent his adult years in central Oregon and Beaverton and returned to Newburgh roughly twenty years ago. And whereas Mr. Lever, in the words of his daughter, has been an exemplary father and citizen, hardworking and honest. And whereas the United States has the greatest number of centarians in the world. I did not know that. And today, Mr. Lever should be honored for his hundredth years on this earth. And now therefore, I, Rick Rogers, Mayor of the City of Newburgh, on the behalf of the City Council and the residents of the City of Newburgh, honor Mr. Lever for his long life and prosperity and wish him many more. So there we are. Mr. Lever, I hope you are listening. Happy birthday. All right, well, great. Other than that, I think that's what we can do at the moment. So I think we turn it over for Will's song and dance routine. There's the next maneuver.
No.
All right, so we'll take a break, I guess, until the pointed hour of seven o'clock. Thank you.
I want to know who our officer is. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, chief's on vacation, so he asked me to sit in, so.
How long have you been with Newburgh?
Since two thousand and seven.
Oh, yeah, great, great. All right, all right. Well, great. Well, thank you. Right, thank you.
And although he has not been a captain for long, he's already brought some very creative ideas about scheduling to the play of the problem. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. This is the City Council Business Session for July eighteenth, twenty twenty two. This meeting is now called to order. There is an agenda in Spanish on our website. A roll call, please, Zyra.
Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Mildenberger?
Present.
Counselor Yonah Hallerman?
Here.
Counselor Koberg?
Peggy's here.
She's here.
Yep.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
And Counselor Finley is absent.
Alrighty, thank you. A pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. All right, with that pledge of allegiance, I'd just like to recognize, went to, I mentioned to Mike earlier, went to a memorial service today at Willamette National Cemetery for a Vietnam veteran, Leonard Gongaluski, who actually happened to be a long term Habitat for Humanity volunteer. So Leonard, rest in peace, my friend, and thank you for your service. Alrighty, we've had both the proclamation recognizing Clarence Lever's hundredth birthday and the city managers' report. So let's move on to public comments and Mr. Cad. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rogers and City Council members. My name is Jesse Cad. And I'm a Christian and resident of Newburgh. I have a few related comments to make, all under the loose heading of Ideas Have Consequences. First, why DEI is triggering? Last city council meeting, the topic of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion was raised, and the mayor noted that the terminology is triggering to some. Perhaps I can shed some light on why that is. DEI, and the latest addition, belonging, represents the tip of the iceberg, where the camel's nose under the tent, or perhaps the smoke in the house, of a bundle of concepts and ideas that wrapped up together constitute the wokeness of critical race theory or critical social justice, if you prefer. These concepts have roots in modified Marxist ideology that assumes all disparity is a result of oppression. The roots of this oppression are systemic racially or otherwise. And the solution is to tear down hierarchy and redistribute privilege. The penetration of these concepts into the air we breathe and even Newburgh City Council goals is a major reason we have supposed divisiveness in our community. It is a corrosive system of belief that results in envy, anger, and resentment. This is why those of us who understand the ramifications of these ideas for our ability to work together as a community are opposed to using this terminology. City Council members, consider well your adoption of this terminology and the message it sends. City Council members, consider well your adoption of this terminology and the message it sends. If you continue to use it, then you are either ignorant, foolish, hypocritical, deluded, evil, or some combination of the above. I hope you will make, you will wake up and reject wokeness, CRT, DEI, and all that it represents. Do not think that you can avoid taking a stand on this issue. We are all going to have to live with the consequences of our choices. Best to do so with integrity. As mentioned earlier, Mayor Rogers has used the term divisiveness to describe recent disagreements in our city. I reject this term as well. It implies a deliberate, unjustified, and disingenuous attempt to sow discord and instability. It mischaracterizes those of us who have deeply held beliefs and choose to speak them in the public square as being fomenters of division. This is at best projection and at worst, a deliberate tactic to put us on the defensive. It is those who advocate for concepts such as DEI and CRT who are sowing ideas whose inevitable consequences lead to social disruption. We who disagree with these ideas are using our rights to speak against a real and present threat to our community. Ideas have consequences, and language is how we communicate ideas. Therefore, language has consequences. I call on the City Council to remove all references to DEI from all city goals, visions, HR policy, and any other place it has seeped into our city government. Replace it with ideals such as respect, unity, fairness, and equality of treatment, not outcome. Second topic, why you cannot be a Christian and LGBTQ plus affirming. The connection here is the addition of the insidious belonging to the DEI acronym. Belonging implies approval, which is the inevitable trajectory that these policies have. Tolerance is no longer sufficient. You must affirm and approve everything a person identifies as, whether right, wrong, true, or false. Some on this council have made statements to the effect that they are Christians, but also believe that affirming those who identify as LGBTQ plus is compatible with that Christianity. This is patently false. Christians are Christians because they have recognized that they are sinners before a just God, repented of their sin, trusted in Jesus Christ as their Savior from the wrath of God for their sin, and Lord of their entire life, not just their own personal private life, but of the whole universe. You cannot claim Christ as Lord and reject His revealed law in scripture. It is beyond obvious that homosexuality, transgenderism, and all other sexual perversions are contrary to both the clear statements of scripture and the purpose of our creation. We are created beings. We do not get to define ourselves or our sexuality. Identity does not come from sexual desires. It comes from our Creator. There is a special circle of hell reserved for those who claim Christ but lead others into sin. Don't believe me? Matthew eighteen-five says, whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone fastened around his neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea. Who is speaking here? Oh, yes, Jesus, our Lord, your Lord. So for anyone within the hearing of my voice who has played the traitor and led others into sin, I say, repent of your sin, turn to Christ, and obey Him from now on by speaking the truth and love. Third and last, in thirty seconds, the selection of a new head librarian. Basically, I'm gonna summarize this one real quick. Please select someone who is not gonna promote CRT and LGBTQ plus agenda as they currently do in our libraries by promoting those agendas to children.
Thank you. Judy Turkey, please.
Okay. I was recently made aware that you guys have put money into a homeless camp and are considering, I don't know if you've considered it, already approved a homeless camp on college. I wanted to express my concerns and let you know some of my experiences and why I am concerned. I live on Carroll Avenue. Several years ago, the gentleman who's across the street and in the corner decided to put in a dorm in his basement. And he has so several bedrooms and a common bathroom and areas. So he had trouble getting college students to want to live in his dorm. So then he went to adults. And then one of the Lutheran churches, I believe it was, rented it and put homeless people in there. Next thing you know, we have an increased police presence and drug dealing going on in our neighborhood. So and last time I was in Portland to go to a restaurant, there were homeless people yelling at each other, yelling at people passing by, throwing things. And the fact of the matter is, is when you have these homeless camps or homeless groups, you have increased drug problems, you have increased violence, and you have increased crash. And so to put in a homeless camp, allow car camping, RV camping, tent camping, the small houses, when you have these camps, you have increased problems. We do have homeless in Newburgh, but we haven't had a big problem because we don't have the camps like they do in Portland. We do not want to become a mini Portland with the issues they have there, and that is what will happen. The biggest concern is it's right next to a school. You should never, ever even consider putting anything like that near a school, a pool, a park, or anywhere where there are children. You not need children exposed to all but drug use, the violence, and the things that go on in those camps. I have known people who have been homeless. I have heard stories about what happens in those camps. It is not a positive thing. To approve a camp, you're going to increase the number of homeless people who are gonna be coming here, and you're gonna increase the problems that go along with it. It's very much a concern to have that near a school, much less within the city limits. That is my serious concern, and I think it needs to not be approved. I think we do need to look for ways to help homeless people. That is not gonna help them. It is actually perpetuating the problem.
Thank you. Alrighty, let's move on then to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
In a second.
Second.
And Mike with a second. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, I am going to, I'm going to recuse myself because of the one on, on the trip to Austria. But for whoever doesn't know, I need to say this. The City of Newburgh, we are sending people as a delegation to the city of Poisdorf in Austria, our sister city. Nothing is being paid for by the City of Newburgh. It is private, it's individuals that are going on this trip. So I recuse myself from that, but it otherwise passes, I believe. Alrighty. And that'll be the beginning of September, actually, for anybody who might recall that the group from Poisdorf was here pre-COVID, three, four years ago. And we've actually sent delegations now. This will be the third time. So based on culture, education, and commerce is the focus. Alrighty, let's move on to public hearings. This is ordinance number twenty-two-two-twenty-nine-oh-one. Approving a health hazard annexation of a point-four-one acre property. Good evening, Mr. Rux. All right, and this is a, thank you, man. Yep. All right, this public hearing is now open. A call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction, anyone? Hearing none. The city attorney's legal announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi-judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with, one, the annexation, change in zoning designation of a point-four-one acre of property, plus a nine-thousand-square-foot area of the adjacent right-of-way located at seven-hundred Northeast Camellia Drive. And two, the repeal ordinance number twenty-two-one-two-eight-seven-five. The announcement required by the Oregon revised statutes is as follows. One, the applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in the staff report under Exhibit B to ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-one, which is attached to the council agenda. Two, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Three, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. And four, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The applicant who has the burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to all of the parties to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. And for the purposes of this announcement, the following definitions apply. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. And evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. Any submission by the applicant after the record is closed must be limited to argument. No additional evidence can be submitted. If the applicant wishes to make final written argument, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the opening of the city attorney announcement.
Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, the staff report, please, Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the city attorney had indicated, this is annexation twenty-one-zero-zero-one up at seven-hundred Northeast Camellia Drive. This is a redo. So this came back in front of council in May of twenty-twenty-one. You did adopt an ordinance for this particular annexation. Posted the annexation and the effective date of the ordinance, the Department of Revenue did not agree with the legal description that was in the packet that came before planning commission in the city council. So what was used was the legal description for Lot Two of that particular subdivision. Department of Revenue wanted a meets and bounds. Well, there were meets and bounds, but it didn't meet their particular protocol. So after working with them for months and months, we finally came to the conclusion that we were gonna have to redo the hearing, and we had the applicant prepare the meets and bounds description, which we had already provided to the Department of Revenue. But they said because that was not part of the original ordinance, it was not acceptable. So this time, we've included everything and the kitchen sink. And so hopefully, everything will work. So, as noted, point-four-one acres for the parcel, and there's nine-thousand square feet of Camellia Drive that was part of all of this. It was out in the county or is in the county, V L D R one. Coming into Newburgh, it would be given the R one. This was a health annexation related to a septic system. Now, the criteria fifteen-two-fifty-oh-two-oh and two-fifty-oh-three-oh. So the planning commission hearing, this was put back in April of twenty-twenty-one, where they did recommend approval. Graphics show where this is at, up in the very north portion of Newburgh, off of Terrace Drive and Camellia. The little different map for our comprehensive plan designation, which is low-density residential. Here's where the site is, where the star is located, at the corner of Terrace and Camellia. This was the subdivision that was originally done. Well, this is Terrace subdivision plot, which is across the street. And where the utilities are. And so it's important to note that they have already dedicated the right-of-way, which is one of the conditions of approval that's in here. And there's conditions that we have about connection to water, and that, trigger for that is established through the city manager. So the criteria needed to be within the urban growth boundary. It is that. It needs to be contiguous. It is to the area to the, to the west. Complies with our comp plan designation. So again, low-density residential, be given the R one zoning designation. Some additional criteria here about availability of sewer, otherwise known as wastewater, water, and roadways. And so there are two roadways, public roadways already adjacent to this. Water is available out in Terrace Drive, and water and sanitary water, wastewater is available out in Terrace Drive as well. There was a non-remonstrance agreement that was required. That document has already been signed, but we did re-include it as the original conditions of approval back in May. Police, fire, and parks are all available. City water lines approximate, sanitary sewer line is approximate, as we noted out in Terrace Drive. The conditions, these are the same conditions from May. Applying to connection system, it must dedicate the additional right-of-way. That has actually been accomplished. The non-remonstrance agreement has been signed and submitted, and the city has that. And then the connection to the water supply system is at the discretion of the city manager. We have to give a hundred-and-eighty days notice in order to be able to do that. Currently, the property is served on a private water district. So staff's recommendation on this one is to adopt ordinance twenty-nine-oh-one, which also repeals the prior ordinance.
Alrighty, thank you. Do we have any public testimony, Zira?
We do not.
Okay. What about any public agency letters or comments?
We do not.
We do not. All right. Well, with that, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing and the city attorney legal announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Rux, on behalf of the applicant, if you'll waive the seven-day timeline to submit final rebuttal?
Yes, they will.
Okay, thank you. So post-hearing announcements. If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. That concludes the city attorney announcements.
All right, the final staff recommendation.
Staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two-two-nine-zero-one.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion, folks? Or questions of staff before he escapes? No, I'm just kidding. Any questions? Anyone? What about Peggy or Denise? Any questions? No? Okay. Alrighty. And would you like to read by title only on this one?
Yeah, we could, if we could have motion in a second to waive the second reading, and then, then we can go read by title only.
Okay, sounds good. All right, can we get a motion to that effect, folks?
I move that we waive the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-two-twenty-nine-oh-one.
Second thought.
All in favor of waiving the second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that passes. And for the next?
I move that we approve our adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-twenty-nine-oh-one.
And read by title.
And read by title.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all, we don't need a, we-
I'll, I'm happy to read the title.
Oh, yeah, please do.
And then we can, then we can roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yep.
So in front of the council for adoption is ordinance number twenty-two-two-two-nine-zero-one, an ordinance approving a health hazard annexation of a zero-point-four-one acre property plus nine-thousand square feet of area of the adjacent right-of-way into the city of Newburgh and change in zoning from Yamhill County V L D R dash one to Newburgh R dash one, low density residential for property located at seven-hundred Northeast Camellia Drive, tax lot R-three-two-zero-seven-A-A dash zero-zero-six-zero-zero, and repealing ordinance number twenty-two-one-two-eight-seven-five.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, do we have that motion and a now a voice vote, correct? Awesome.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Mildenberger?
Yes.
Counselor Yonah Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Counselor Finley is absent.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much. Let's move on to ordinance number twenty-two-two-twenty-nine-hundred. An ordinance vacating South Garfield Street between East First Street and East Second Street. This is a legislative hearing, and this is now called to order. Declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions, folks. If you shop at Naps, that, that doesn't need to be a conflict of interest. Okay, just, just saying. So, all right, all right, moving on. Mr. Rux, good, good evening. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So first of all, we'll start on this one by entering the entire staff report and all the exhibits and attachments into the record. So this is vacation twenty-two-zero-zero-zero-one. It's a vacation of South Garfield Street from first to second, a north-south alley, and an east, a portion of the east-west alley. So this is all related to the site where the Naps Thriftway is located. So Naps was constructed roughly about nineteen eighty-six. So Naps was constructed roughly about nineteen eighty-six. Staff, including the city recorder and myself, have done extensive research to find the documents approved by council, prior councils to vacate such rights of way and easements. And we were unable to locate them. Could have been to water damage, fires, that we were not able to locate. So the Naps facility was built over the South Garfield, again, between First Street and Second Street. The north-south alley called the Hudson Alley. And then a portion of that east-west alley. So by not being able to find everything, we came back to council. And on April eighteenth, you adopted a resolution to initiate the vacation process. And that would be done in partnership with the Bowers, which are represented by Mr. Gunn, sitting behind me this evening. So we've embarked and so part of this process is that Mr. Gunn prepared a lot of documents, legal descriptions and maps. He's done postings and so forth that are required by Oregon revised statutes for this. And so this is a map that shows Garfield Street in the hatched area and then the labeling for the Hudson Alley north-south and then a portion of that east-west alley. So there are no specific criteria in the Newburgh Development Code related to right of way vacations. It's all out of Oregon revised statutes, chapter two seventy-one. So there's a, the city has the ability to do this. Because it was a partnership, it was not required of the Bowers to submit an application. The city submitted the application. So oh eight oh didn't apply. They didn't need, did not need to file a petition, so that one was not applicable. There was no action required to, for that, for the, for the action of the city government. There are notice and hearing requirements, though, that are applicable. And so in this situation, we had to put two notices in the Newburgh graphic for two consecutive weeks. So we did that on June twenty-ninth and July sixth. And then based upon the information that Mr. Gunn gave us, following the distance requirements in statute, the city mailed out those notices to all of those particular individuals. And then Mr. Gunn posted the property and signed the appropriate affidavits for that and all in the case file. So here we are now at two seventy-one, one twenty, a public hearing to be held. And so we are doing that tonight on the eighteenth. Under one thirty, can, under its own motion, appeal. And so you've initiated this vacation back on April eighteenth. We provided all of the notices. The Bowers did provide the necessary consent documents as well as the Johnsons, because they were abutting in this situation. We did the research. There were no outstanding city leaves. And we checked with the Yamhill County Assessor on the files and property taxes are current that the Bowers have to pay that are surrounding all of this. So the vacant, thank you, the vacated right of way would return back to R three-two-one-nine A B one oh six zero zero, which is owned by the Bowers and the trust for the Bowers. There's a requirement that our documents that will need to be filed per the resolution that you adopted previously is that the city will take care of recording all those documents. So there's documents to be recorded with the county clerk. There's information that has to go to the county assessor and there's information that has to go to the county surveyor. So they can update all their documents and their maps accordingly. Vacation for purposes of rededication, this is not the case for solving a thirty-five-plus-year issue. We're getting resolved in partnership with the Bowers. The nature of the operations, we've notified the utility companies. There is a provision in the Newburgh Municipal Code in twelve oh five-three-sixty, and so we notified all of them. We did receive one response back from P G E. And say, well, we need to retain some easements. I communicate with them. You already have a pole at the end of this alley. It'll be vacated. You also have a transformer in the alley and you already provide electrical service to the Naps facility. With that, they were okay. We're not a port district. So we don't have to address two seventy-one, one eighty, two seventy-one, one ninety. Was not applicable because that also goes back to the issue about port districts and petitions. Two hundred was not applicable, two ten was not applicable, two twenty was not applicable. And then again, I've already mentioned that the city will be recording the documents that are in the packet before you this evening. I labeled this criteria was really is the application criteria we have. And so I've already mentioned this in the presentation. We've done the noticing two times in the graphic. The public notice on the building, both the north and south side has been done and the notice was sent out to the required surrounding property owners. We have the consent forms that were signed by the Bowers and those again are in the case file. And this one won't significantly affect the value because this is all done in partnership with the Bowers and they're aware that this would come back onto the tax rolls. So there's actually some benefit to all of the taxing authorities. So briefly, before we get to the formal, staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-hundred. So with that, I will stop.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, let's open the public testimony portion of this hearing, Mr. Gunn.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers. My name is Mike Gunn. I obviously represent Bowers. In this case here, also Leonard Johnson. I want to supplement a couple of things that Mr. Rux said. This has been kind of the culmination of about a year and a half's worth of issues that have arisen in this matter. Hopefully, council will adopt the ordinance and as soon as that ordinance is recorded, we will not have any kind of title issues showing Naps building build over rights of way, which is a pretty much a horrendous problem. I want to supplement one other thing. The, the ordinance requires when the municipality, i.e. the city initiates the vacation, that all the abutting property owners have to sign and Bowers, obviously, Dave and Pat is trustees and Vivian is trustees, own Naps property. But on the southeast corner of that sixty-five plus or minus feet of that east-west alley, butts Leonard Johnson's property. So Leonard Johnson also had to sign the consent to proposed vacation, which he did as part of the file. So that's, that's about all I have to say. The, I will say that the city has been cooperative once this thing finally got on the track to being resolved. And we provided, as Mr. Rux said, we provided all, basically all the data as far as the property owners in the affected area. This is the statute requires all the property owners in an area, depending upon where you are, is how many feet you are, east and west, north and south, et cetera. That was done by us. We gave Mr. Rux the data on that. The city did the mailing. I did the posting of the notices on that. So with that, I would certainly urge the council to pass this ordinance, adopt this ordinance to put this major, which has been a major headache to us, Bowers, to rest. So. That's all I have to say unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gunn, thank you and thank you for your work on this. All right, staff recommendation.
So again, Mayor Doug Rux, Community Development Director, the staff recommendation is to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-hundred.
All right, council deliberation, any questions, folks? Or comments? No? Any, what about Denise or Peggy? No? Okay. Alrighty, I will entertain. Yes, sir.
Just close, if we could close a public comment, I think then.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, let me make sure. There was nothing else, right? No one on the line, nothing else. My apologies. Public testimony is now closed. Okay. All right, ready for a motion? Okay, anyone?
I move that we accept ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-hundred.
And Elise with a second. Any further discussion?
On ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-hundred, we just need to waive the second reading. Waive the second.
All right. So, and we second the waiving of the second reading as well?
Second.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All in favor of waiving the second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the second reading has been waived. All right, let's move on to the regular ordinance then. You got that, Mike?
I move that we pass twenty-two-two-nine-hundred. In title only.
And a second. All right, and Elise with a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote?
Roll call vote, yes.
Roll call voted is.
And I will read the ordinance title.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-zero and ordinance vacating South Garfield Street between East First Street and East Second Street. The entire portion of the north-south alley between South Garfield Street and South Washington Street that intersects with the east-west alley. And approximately seventy feet of the eastern end of the east-west alley, west of South Washington Street, between East First Street and East Second Street, generally described previously within the corporate city limits of Newburgh, Oregon.
All right, I think we're ready for the vote.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Mildenberger?
Yes.
Counselor Yonah Holman?
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Counselor Finley is absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to ordinance twenty-two-two-nine oh three, council compensation. I believe this is Katie. Good evening, Katie.
Good evening. I think, is this one a public hearing also?
This is also legislative, yes.
All right, so this, all right, this ordinance twenty-two-two-nine oh three, the hearing is, is now called to order. Declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions, anyone? You all being counselors there, there's probably, yeah, probably something, well, I don't have any. All right, all right. Aside from that, all right. All right, the, the staff report, please.
Okay, so this one's pretty quick. The Budget Committee has already passed the council compensation package that we provided to you guys back in March, which was moving away from the ten dollar per meeting being paid twice a year. Because that was just very cumbersome for finance and we just were kind of out of date on what the council compensation packages are now. So we wanted to move to two hundred dollars a month for each counselor and move that instead of the, twice a year, we wanted to do it monthly. So that is the whole package.
Righty. Alrighty, any public testimony?
No.
All right, public testimony is then closed. The recommendation from staff, please.
We recommend you adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-nine-zero-three.
Okay, alrighty, thank you. Questions, folks? Alrighty, let's see, then we, can we waive the second reading then? Yes, sir, let's start with that.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to waive the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. All in favor of waiving the second reading signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Our hearing none, those, second reading is waived. Alrighty, now the regular motion. By title only.
Mr. Mayor, I'm motion that we approve resolution, resolution twenty-two-two-nine-zero-three by title only.
And a second? Mike with a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, let's get a title read.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in front of the council for adoption is ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-three. An ordinance repealing ordinance two thousand eight dash two-seven-zero-four and establishing a new procedure for council compensation.
Alrighty, and can we get a motion to that effect?
Are we ready for the, we're ready for the roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please, Zaira.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Mildenberger?
Yes.
Counselor Yonah Holman?
Yes.
Counselor Kilburg?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
And Counselor Finley is absent.
Alrighty, motion passes, ordinance passes. Thank you, thanks, Katie. All right, now we're moving on to the measure one oh nine choices. We talked about this already during the work session. Maybe to get it started, I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make one, at least for what direction we're going to take. And if we do, we'll need a resolution as well, is my understanding. Yeah.
Right, so we'll need to pass any action should council decide to take action as an ordinance. In front of the council are two ordinances. One is ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-five. That is the comprehensive ban or prohibition on psilocybin manufacturing facilities and psilocybin service centers. That's ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-five. The other ordinance in your packet is ordinance number twenty-two-two-nine-zero-six. That would establish a two-year moratorium on the psilocybin manufacturing facilities or, or service centers. So this is a legislative hearing, so we'll need to, if council wants to bring forth one of those ordinances, we'll need to entertain public comment, just like we've been doing.
Perfect. All right, would someone like to entertain one of the, one or the other to get us at least started? But again, it's twenty-nine oh, twenty-two-two-nine oh five is the ban and twenty-two-two-nine oh six is a two-year moratorium. And otherwise, we do nothing. It's option three, okay?
I'm looking. I can't see it.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty-two-two-nine oh five.
All right, twenty-nine oh five has been suggested. Do we have a second? That's the ban. The voters, if we approve it here. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Peggy with a second. Alrighty, alrighty, let's, with that, we can order, can we get a vote on that or do you need to go through the hearing first?
Let's go through the hearing, Mr. Mayor, yes.
So this is the hearing then again for twenty-two-two-nine oh five regarding measure one oh nine and psilocybin. This meeting, this hearing is now called to order a declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions, anyone? Hearing none. In this case, we've had the staff report. It was presented earlier. Any public testimony, Zaira?
No public testimony.
Public, public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. I won't, no, no recommendation. We got it. All right. So let's go into any, any further discussion. Again, we'll remember back to second reading and by title only when we get to that part. All right, any further discussion on the motion as it stands?
Yes, Mike.
I just want to make clear where this is. Picking out the one to ban this completely, not for two years, but just ban it completely. Go to the voters, okay?
So the voters in November, for the voters to decide.
Since we had this discussion, a work session, maybe someone could in a thirty-second elevator speech recap the discussion we had at the work session.
Who would like to do that? Well, I'll give it a, I'll give it a try anyway. So presented before us are three different options regarding measure one oh nine regarding the medical use of psilocybin. The options that were presented to us were to, as stated, twenty-two-two-nine oh five is to ban any production or distribution in the city of Newburgh. This will go to the voters if we approve it here in the November election. The other option, twenty-two-two-nine oh six was to put a two-year moratorium on this while the Health Authority and others, we get the, the actual rules governing this. And then the third was to do nothing, which would mean that, that it would not be subject to any kind of voter thing. So in this case, we are recur, or we are voting on whether or not to submit a submit to the voters in November a complete ban, is what it is. Okay, does that get it sort of, sort of kind of? Yeah, okay. The other discussion that we had is that, you know, regarding medical use of psilocybin, particularly for the treatment of depression, anxiety, and even as smoking cessation, I understand. So, and that's where we are. Alrighty. And let's see. Would someone, we've got a motion, we've got a second, right? Read by title only. Yes?
We could waive the second reading.
Okay, did we waive? No, we did not. Okay, motion to waive the second reading then if we. Okay, uh, motion to waive the second reading, then, if we could, folks.
I will motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
And Denise with a second. All right, any further discussion on waiving the second reading? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call for a second reading?
You can waive the second reading. Apologies, Mr. Gunn.
Okay, thank you, no worries. Alrighty, uh, all in favor of waiving the second reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign. Hearing none, we have waived the second reading. All right, now for the motion itself.
Yeah, I'd like to, so, the ordinance, we're gonna, we need to, um, adopt that. So, if we get another motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2022-2905, read by title only. And then, if that passes, then we will have a resolution that will refer this ordinance to the voters.
All right, then we'll take a motion, folks.
I, I move that we pass Resolution or Ordinance 22, 2022-2905.
Read by title.
Read by title.
Thank you. All right, and a second?
Second.
Mike with a second. Alrighty, any further discussion? We'll take a roll call, title only, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in front of the Council for Adoption is Ordinance Number 2022-2905, an ordinance declaring a ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
And the roll call vote, Zira.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Miltonberger?
Yes.
Counselor Yonah Holman?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Kilburg?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley is absent. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, we are currently on to new business. Resolution, oh, no, we need a resolution. Okay.
Yes, so.
In front of me, there we go.
So, step two, um, in front of the council now is Resolution Number 2022-3856. So, now that you've adopted Ordinance Number 2022-2905, which establishes the ban, uh, or approves the ban on psilocybin manufacturing facilities and service centers, this resolution would refer that to the voters and authorize, um, staff to proceed with submitting the ordinance to HA and the other steps that need to occur in order to get, um, this ordinance on the ballot.
All right, and again, that's 2022-3856.
Which can be approved by voice vote, or by, by, does not need a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, so I'll take a motion if, if someone would like, uh, to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 2022-3856.
And a second?
A second.
Elise with a second. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the resolution passes. Alrighty, let's move on.
Mayor, Mayor, I think that was Peggy that seconded it, right?
Oh, Peggy seconded, all right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Peggy. All right, um, all right, new business. Resolution 2022-3850, a resolution introducing rules for council subcommittees and boards. Uh, Mr. Worthy, are you, uh, walking us through this one?
Yes. As requested by Mayor Rogers, staff has prepared some operational roles for council subcommittees and boards similar to those used in other cities. Staff assumes that after debate, they will be adopted. Many cities have roles governing the operation of council subcommittees, boards, and commissions. The, uh, these, except for council roles and planning commissions, the city of Newburgh currently lacks roles for the other committees and subcommittees. Having additional structure would assist in providing committees and the volunteers that serve in them some clear guidance on committee conduct, which is not to say that there is a problem right now. This is not in response to some issue. It is just that it would be a good thing